Good evening and welcome to this City of Isanty City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 6th. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance. Doing roll call, all council members are present except for Councilman Lundin, who has called. He's a little under the weather, so will not be attending this evening. Any public comment? You can feel free to step up to the mic, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Kristi LaRoe. And my address, did you say? 31925 Lakeway Drive Northeast Cambridge. Do I talk this way or?
Just talk right into the mic. Talk at us.
Well, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm running for county commissioner for District 5. And one thing I wanted to talk about was transparency. And just tell you, I commend you for having a sign out here on County Road 5, letting the people know what's happening in our city here. And so that's kind of what I'd like to see happen for Cambridge, also the government center. I also, I'm running on, I'm against the Orange Frog Initiative. And I'm against them spending, some of the commissioners okayed it, $650,000 on it. And so if I get into office, I would not spend any more money towards that. And I was very excited to meet a lot of the people in Isanty County. I was very excited to get a lot of their support. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Susan Morris. My address is 5744 County Road 5 Northeast Cambridge, Minnesota. So I'm also, I am your commissioner. This is new to my district. And just, you know, I just want to share a few facts with you about Isanty County, that there's been some misrepresentation of facts that have been gone out. First of all, in Isanty County, we have the 19th lowest county tax per capita in the state of Minnesota. So out of 87 counties, that's not bad. That means for your tax dollar, we're buying some, you know, all counties have to do the same services, just like cities. You know, how efficiently we do that is a standard of how we measure ourselves. So just to give you that, and that's actually on the state auditor's website. There's a great tool called the County Comparison Tool. And you can, and you can do with cities too, see how you stand against other cities. So, so the Orange Frog Initiative, so when, just like cities, we all got the ARPA dollars, right? And when we received those dollars in the beginning, they could only be spent on things related to COVID. And so in the beginning, we're looking at $8 million as a county going, how can, I mean, there's only so much Plexiglas and masks you can buy. And so we thought, you know, for the first time ever, there's some dollars available to invest in mental health initiative. Two years before the pandemic started, when we did our county assessment, which we're required by law to do with the Alina Health, both addiction and social isolation rose to the top as the two biggest concerns in the county for health. That was before the pandemic. So we thought if we could use some of this money, and it's called the Happiness Advantage, people have been trying to belittle investment in mental health, you know, by like coining, of course, the Orange Frog is the parable that was written about, so the Happiness Advantage book was written by Sean Aker 15 years ago. It's all science, but guess what? Most people aren't into the science. So he's like, how can we get these truths across to people? And he said, well, Jesus, the greatest teacher that ever lived, used a parable. So that's what he did, is he created a parable using the Orange Frog. So when you realize, you know, when we looked at the data of the kids in our community, and how many kids are dealing with anxiety, depression, thoughts of suicide, attempted suicide, and unfortunately, successful suicide, we knew we had to do something. If we could move the needle on that, we wanted to try to do that. So we took $650,000 of the federal ARPA dollars to invest in this in our community. We did a model, of course, you know, that we did the train the trainer. So not one more penny will ever be spent on the Orange Frog. We have everything, so it's just totally self-contained, and it perpetuates itself. We've used it to teach the teachers in the 9/11 school district. Because, so in Flint, Michigan, when, you know, everything was kind of going to hell in a handbasket there, when they had the lead in the water and all the poverty, they brought this program in as the last ditch effort to try to save that school. And within two years, of course, the great thing about schools, they have all these great metrics to measure things, like absenteeism, grades, teacher retention, new hires. They turned everything on its head in two years to total, to huge successful numbers. It's been multiplied across the country in other school districts. And when we looked at the data, and that's what we look at in Isanty County is data, we thought if we can invest this in our kids, we're going to try. So that's what that's about. And I think for too many years, mental health has been, you know, when I was growing up, it was shameful to even talk about mental health because that meant you were weak. We've been trying to normalize talking about mental health for the last several years. And to me, we should not politicize when it comes to mental health. So that being said, Isanty County, we're busy doing budgeting like you are, and the numbers are really scary because, you know, inflation affects all of us, right? And so we're trying really, really hard to keep our levy as low as possible this year. I wish you luck in doing the same. One of the big initiatives that I've been a part of in Isanty County was the Total County Reorganization. And that was to save tax dollars. And it was to also create tons of efficiency. Chad Struce told me just today that he's been working hard on figuring out what that savings has meant to Isanty County taxpayers. And up to this point, it's $750,000. So that's a big win for taxpayers of Isanty County. And that's been something I've been firmly behind the whole time, and my opponent also opposes that. So anyways, that's the good news I can share with you. And if you have any questions, you all know you can get ahold of me.
I do have one question.
Yep.
Did I hear you say that you had to follow along the line of mandates?
The state requires the county and Alina to do a public, it's a, it's a public health assessment of the community every three years.
But it's a state, then Alina directs it, or you and Alina direct it together?
We do it in partnership together, it's Isanty County Public Health and Alina does it together.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
State your name and address for the record.
Scott LaRoe. 31925 Lakeway Drive, Cambridge, Minnesota.
Make sure it's aimed right at you. There you go, perfect.
Okay, sorry about that. The Orange Frog is, is not a good thing. It actually displaces the gospel of Jesus Christ. Jesus is the one who put parables together for us, not, not Mr. Akers. And we, and with the Orange Frog is a, it's a glory to self book. And the more better the frog does, the brighter his orange spot gets. And the more bugs he can attract to go feed other frogs in the pond, they start glorifying this frog. And each day, there's, the Orange Frog has something to say to you.
We can hear you fine, sir.
Okay. Every day, there's a calendar, there's five, five days that he tells you something to do. One day, he tells you to put on your favorite shoes and listen to your favorite song. And when I get up in the morning, I pick up my Bible, I read a Bible verse. And I, I get that Bible verse going in my head. And it gives me wisdom, gives me peace, gives me happiness, because it's eternal, it's eternal power. And to waste time, to spend maybe up to $4 million on an Orange Frog, to me is crazy. You could at least get higher psychiatrists or something like that. I don't see any good with it for mental health. I just think we're going to develop a bunch of narcissistic people, full of self, and not learning how to love their neighbor at all. And also, Kristi's opponent has voted to take away our right to vote for county auditor and recorder. And I think that's a big checks and balance that's been taken away from the people. And it just, it opens the door for a lot of corruption. And if our whole country starts going that way, it only consolidates government, makes government bigger, and it makes us smaller. I just don't think it's right at all. And also, they want, their spending, they just voted to take bids to remodel our government center. That's going to be $10 million. And I don't think it's wise to do that right now when we're going into a recession. And they're taking different groups of people. I have to get more of an understanding for it, but what I understand is they're siloing different groups, and they put a guy over the top of each one. So what it does is it eliminates conversation between offices. And it's, it's just another control with inside the government. And I don't think it's going to bring any more efficiency, and I don't think it's saving any money at all. Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? We have any addendments, Ms. Wood?
No, we do not.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt the agenda by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Approval of City Council minutes for August 16th, which was a regular meeting of City Council, as well as a committee of a whole meeting on that same date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Collison and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Announcements, Committee of the Whole will be Tuesday, September 20th at 5:00 PM. City Council meeting will also be Tuesday, September 20th at 7:00 PM. And there will also be a planning commission meeting Tuesday, September 20th, immediately following that City Council meeting. Any council committee reports?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I ask that you, could I request that you take a brief, three-minute recess, please?
Yes, ma'am. Let's take a brief, three-minute recess right now. And we will conclude at?
Do you need a motion?
Oh, can I get a motion to take a three-minute recess till 7:17ish?
We have discussion, why are we doing that? Just private or?
I'm going to, I'm going to address the mayor on an item.
Okay, motion to approve the three-minute recess.
Motion to approve the three-minute recess by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. We stand in a recess for three minutes. Do I need a motion to continue, or do I just open it back up?
Please do a motion, just for clarity.
Motion to come out of recess.
Second.
Motion to come out of recess by Councilman Burgley and a second simultaneously by Councilman Gordon and Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Therefore, we are out of recess. So I do got to apologize. It was brought to our attention that items are, that are restricted from government topics in public comment. They're not for platform, for private agendas, to make personal attacks, to air personal grievances, to make political endorsements or political campaign purposes. I didn't know that. Ms. Wood didn't know that. Our city clerk didn't know that. And when we found out, that's why I'm apologizing now. So my apologies for letting that happen. We weren't aware of that. We are now, though.
It won't happen again, right?
It won't happen a second time. That is correct. Let's move on to business items. K1, ordinance, interim ordinance authorizing studies and imposing a moratorium on the sale of cannabis products. Ms. Wood?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as was discussed at two of our Committee of the Whole meetings, one on July 19th and one on August 16th, it was regarding the new ability from a legislation meeting that was passed on July 1st to allow certain products containing Delta-9 THC and other edible THC items for sale in Minnesota. It was discussed at our committee meetings that because we don't have any regulation, and the state doesn't have a lot of regulations on this, that we would need to research this topic a little bit more to see if it was in the best interest of our city residents and businesses to have any kind of regulations such as zoning requirements that go along with that. So staff did draft and posted for the 10 required days an ordinance, interim ordinance that is imposing a moratorium on the sale of certain cannabis products that is outlined before you, and as I mentioned, was posted for the 10 required days. This does not have any impact on any businesses currently who is selling those Delta-9 products allowed by the legislation law that was passed on July 1st. Those are permitted, but it would not allow any new ones until it has been decided upon through council on a permanent regulatory ordinance. So staff will begin researching, discussing this topic with other cities. The League of Minnesota City is a city attorney on seeing what's best for the city of Isanty, and then it'll be brought forward. Staff is recommending that we do approve this interim ordinance as provided in front of you.
So before we go on, there is a gentleman in the audience here. Normally, we wouldn't let this happen, but he seems to be pretty educated on this matter. Is, you want to step forward here quick, sir, and just share a brief? I don't want you to open the old Bible on me, but just give us a little bit.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Capel Rourke. I represent small businesses throughout the state that currently sell and have sold these products for the last couple of years. I, I have one quick question for your staff, just to get a point of clarification. I know it says in there, I know you just said, Ms. Wood, that it would not affect existing businesses that are currently selling that? Does it, in reading the ordinance, I don't see that language. And I'm just one who tends to want to see it in the language, and I don't, if it's there and I missed it, that is not the first time that that would happen, but I didn't see an exemption for existing businesses.
I apologize. It's been a while since I drafted this. Let me just find it. Right here, on Article 6, Letter B, businesses engaged in the sale of cannabis products, cannabis products, assuming, within the city prior to the effective date of this ordinance is in the exceptions.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'll make this as brief as possible, and I'll continue to work with your staff on this. Just to be clear, prior to July 1st, when, in fact, in 2019, the federal government passed the hemp law, and it allowed any product, it allowed products to have less than 0.3% of Delta-9 THC, which is the predominant component of cannabis plant. So you could have products that were federally compliant with, that had less than 0.3% of Delta-9. And that meant these gummies, which are currently being sold at 5mg, which is state compliant, you could have them up to 10. I even saw them up as large, as high as 20mg. They are completely federally legal. I could have a trunk full of them. Possession is not illegal, and usage is not illegal, unlike full-blown cannabis on the federal level. What the state, what did happen in 2019 is there, with technology, businesses starting selling something called Delta-8 and Delta-10. They're different than Delta-9. They have a lower, think of it in alcohol as kind of 3-2 beer, okay? So it has a lower toxicity rate, but they are fully federally legal, and there is no 0.3% cap. So there would be businesses that were selling 50mg, 100mg, 250mg products of Delta-8 and Delta-10. All of these products were being sold in Minnesota. There was nothing in state law that explicitly said they were not to be sold. Last fall, the Board of Pharmacy issued opinion that said, because these products, Delta-8, Delta-10, could be intoxicating, they probably shouldn't be sold. They put that opinion out there, but they never enforced that. So one of the efforts this year at the law was to clarify for businesses what can and cannot be sold. It wasn't looking to open up a new market, it was actually clarifying. And the final result is that you can sell any THC, Delta-9, Delta-8, Delta-10, as long as it has less than 0.3% of any of the THC's, and as long as the edibles are less than 5mg per serving and less than 50mg in the combined packaging. So, in reality, the new law didn't expand the number of products that are on the market. It really restricted the number of products that are on the market. In addition, it treats CBD and THC, both of them are components of cannabis and hemp, but THC has a, has an intoxicating effect where CBD does not. The new law treats THC and CBD as if they are one in the same. So this product, which is simply a lotion that would be applied to joints or sores, and is sold at places that are 21-plus, it's sold at wellness centers, it's sold in grocery stores, it's sold throughout the state. This is now a 21-plus product needed to be purchased. And it is regulated the same.
You said 21-plus, you're saying age, is that age?
Age, yes, I'm sorry. And these gummies, which do have an intoxicating principle, are also age-restricted. They're treated the same. I don't think that was necessarily the intent. The law was drafted, I'm not going to say quickly, but it was not very precise. And there are a lot of unanswered questions, and I'm sure they'll be re-debated and discussed next session. One thing that we are doing, we are supporting cities that regulate these and license these products. These are products that should be licensed. They're licensed in other states. These are not something that should be available to kids. They shouldn't be easy to access for youth. But we do have a concern about the prohibition. I do appreciate that it doesn't affect current businesses. I would urge you to take, there are four city councils having this debate currently right now, tonight. And so it is an evolving issue that we are trying to provide as much information. We do think regulation is appropriate. We do think limiting it to age-restricted stores. We do think zoning is also appropriate for cities that have existing zoning for tobacco and alcohol. We do support that. We do want, want cities to pay attention to how you regulate CBD and products with trace amounts of THC. That I don't think, my guess is most cities aren't trying to capture these lotions and make them 21-plus and prohibit who can sell those. So it is a complicated issue. I do support cities taking their time. I do caution you that the majority of these products have been in sale in your community for over the last two years. So if the sky wasn't falling for the last two years, it's probably not going to be falling now. But that doesn't mean that cities shouldn't take time and figure out how to do reasonable regulation so that businesses have a clear path on how they can operate, and you as city council members in the city can understand how you can regulate these products.
Is there a difference between hemp and CBD?
No, so CB, there's a difference between hemp and cannabis. And the only difference there is how much THC is in there. So a hemp plant is a plant that has less than 0.3% of THC, and a cannabis plant is a plant that has more than 0.3% THC. CBD, CBD exists in both of these plants. And now with technology, you can extract CBD from both hemp and cannabis plants. And if you get it and you see a package of CBD, it's going to look like a white powder, or it could look like an oil, you would have no way of determining if that came from a cannabis plant or a hemp plant, because it's essentially the same thing.
So to sell something that says hemp, you're not selling cannabis, is what you're saying?
Yes, if you sell something that's hemp, it's not cannabis. But it's, in Minnesota, it should, we're expecting that it will be hemp-derived.
But CBD is cannabis?
No, CBD is derived from both. It's taken from both. And so if you had.
I sell both, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, if you, if you have, if you have CBD, it's derived from hemp or cannabis. It exists in both places. And yeah, CBD-derived products are, and CBD is a non-intoxicating product. It may give you some relaxing properties, but it is not something that is, it does not get too high, and I try to avoid using that term because it varies with everybody, but yeah.
How about testing positive in a, in a drug test? If I put CBD lotion on my skin, will I test positive on a?
CBD lotion shouldn't make you test positive. The only thing I would say is this has, this is what's called full-spectrum CBD. If you have a product that has full-spectrum CBD, it is going to have trace amounts of THC. The odds that you would test positive from putting a lotion on that had trace amounts of THC are pretty low. But it, anything that has full-spectrum CBD will have a minuscule amount of THC.
How about the hemp, how about the hemp side of things? You'll test positive with a drug test then, won't you?
If you took, if you took THC that was derived from hemp, which hemp has THC, it has Delta-9, Delta-8, Delta-10, drug tests aren't going to be able to determine where it came from. Because you could, you could theoretically extract enough THC from a hemp product and combine it and add it, and in fact, that's what a lot of companies do, is they extract THC from hemp, and then they use that THC in these gummies. And you will probably test positive if you have enough of this in your system.
So, Councilman Burgley, you might want to clarify why you're selling it.
Oh, I, I sell it for pain relief. It's called Hemp Original Relief.
Because he's a chiropractor.
Yeah, that, that.
That's what I was looking for, you to say, Councilman.
I, no, I didn't know, yeah, but that is, that.
Because he was looking like, why is this guy selling one? I wanted you to clarify that, was all.
But that is, and it is what I brought up about your wellness center. It would not surprise me if multiple of those businesses are selling some CBD components over there. And my guess is, you're not looking, you're not looking, and I know they'd be grandfathered in with the new law, but you're probably not looking to restrict people from selling CBD lotion just because it has trace amounts of THC.
Is that true, Chief? Is that true, Chief? We're not trying to restrict those people?
No, I mean, we, we understand people need it for health reasons, people like anxiety, my dog has anxiety.
Well, people use.
To be honest with you, I might feed my dog something.
And I know he's got it. And FYI, if you have to buy it for your dog, make sure that it's someone over 21, because that also is now age-restricted under the new law.
A thunderstorm happens, it's a 110-pound shepherd that looks like a poodle.
But when you say that, though, people would use medical marijuana for health reasons, too.
They might have anxiety, they might have something practically wrong.
But when you, when we regulate that, we got to make sure we clarify that, because.
That's why we're putting this in place, so we can be more educated on this, to where we don't miscross that T or miscross that I. We want to make sure all of our ducks in a row before this comes full bore. And essentially, that's what Ms. Wood and the staff needs to do, and it's great you've stepped up and give us a little bit of education on it as well, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And Ms. Wood, I would, I'd get this man's card. Because he, yeah.
Give him mine, I'll, I'll send you an email.
Please.
Alright.
Just, just any education we can get, I, it's not that I'm looking to shun the product, by all means, it's just that I want to be educated, as well as, as I would like our city's police department to be educated.
Well, and I think, I mean.
Public in general.
Public in general, correct.
And I, I fully, when I wear another hat, I represent small cities throughout the state. And I certainly appreciate the work, not only the staff does, but the law enforcement. And we're trying to make this as simple, your law enforcement and your police department certainly isn't going to be wanting to go in and test products, that is not what they should or want to be doing.
We have better things to do, right, Chief?
Right, so, so we want to give them, we, it's one of the reasons why this law was, at, at least initially started, so that law enforcement and governing bodies could go in and know, kind of at a glance, this meets the criteria, this doesn't meet the criteria, so.
So that, that's essentially, so all this is, Councilman Burgley, is we're putting this in place so we can better educate the staff and, and us, and the community and law enforcement. We just want to make sure it's an even playing field as we've always played on. So I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, you should have been a comedian.
We're, we're planning on trying to get something wrapped up with this pretty quickly. I mean, I don't think we, we're, we have up to a year, I think, on this, but I mean, we're not planning on taking a full year, right? I mean, it's, I suppose it depends on how long it takes, but I mean, it's not, this isn't designed to necessarily stop it for very long or anything like that, I don't think, right, I mean.
Correct, Councilman McGorden.
Just gives them that 12 months if need be, but I, I'm with you, I don't think it'll take them that long.
Yeah, just gives us time to figure out what we need to be doing, yeah.
We just need a motion to accept this, or unless you guys have any other questions.
How's the state law differ from the federal law when it comes to the THC? What is it, five milligrams, up to five milligrams, or?
He chuckles as he comes up.
I'm, my question is getting at, DOT regulations are by federal, they trump the state.
Yeah, when it comes to, when it comes to cannabis marijuana law, Minnesota has historically kind of marched to the beat of their own drummer, and this law is no different. So federal law, and this doesn't apply to DOT, so let's, let's clarify this. Federal law says that you can have products with Delta 9 THC as long as it's below .3%. They say nothing about any of the other isomers like Delta 8 and Delta 10. But that doesn't mean that if you consume it and it shows up in a blood test, you're exempt. Even though it is a federally legal product, it still doesn't give you the ability, it still doesn't mean that you have the ability to use it and pass DOT regulations. So Minnesota currently now has a stricter law than federal with regards to our dosage limits of five milligrams and 50 milligrams. And that, and because it applies to both Delta 8 and Delta 10, we're stricter than the feds. So anything that's Minnesota compliant will automatically be federally compliant.
Anybody with a commercial driver's license is, has random drug testing?
Don't do it.
Yeah.
That's the way I'm taken out of it.
Yeah, if you're.
And I have the same license you do, and I'm just not going to do it.
If you have, if you have a commercial driver's license, even though these may be federally compliant, it doesn't mean you're going to be legal to use them under their, your federal commercial driver's license.
Yeah, don't do it.
Somebody walks in my office, I knew, I don't sell many, I wouldn't even put the CBD on them.
If, if you recall, when I hurt my back.
There's a lot of confusion.
Yeah, and, and if you recall, remember when I hurt my back and I could barely move out of this chair? I did go see Councilman Burgley, and he offered it to me, and I never took it. He, flat-out asked me, do you get DOT certified? Yes, I do. Well, then you can't have this, I mean, he flat-out told me. So, I mean, he's smarter than he looks, everybody.
Quite a compliment.
That's a compliment, Paul.
I do have one, you said, any further questions or comments, I just wanted to, do you have any comments on this whole thing, Chief, as far as the?
No, not really, no, we'll just.
I think we're in that education process, if you wouldn't, if you would agree.
Some of the other issues that law enforcement have have nothing to do with the sale or possession of these pieces of puzzle. And that ordinance won't address those, anyway.
Okay.
So, so just one other question on top of that, so if we would have someone that wasn't necessarily grandfathered in, we don't send you, we send some building business inspector, how does that work?
Is it our code enforcement we send? What if, what if I decided to open up a place tomorrow to sell this, and you're, nope, you can't do that because this ordinance says that, who's going to regulate that?
Between us and community development, we figure out what the, if somebody complained about it, what's going on, and then we, we, between the two of us, we'd handle it.
Community development and, and code enforcement.
Alright, thank you.
One other thought on this, too, because I had, I had heard that there was, the same mall that we're in, that there was maybe a CBD place that was going to be coming into that mall. So depending on how long we were to take on something like this, if you had somebody that was planning to open a business, and, and I don't know, and I, that could just be a rumor, that's just what I've heard. So if we take too long on this, we could be holding up other businesses from opening, I guess, and that.
Good point.
You know, and I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that until just we were having this conversation now.
Councilman McGorden, they would be able, permitted to sell a lot of the products that other businesses have sold, just not the ones that.
But those kind of, everybody wants that product, so, you know what I mean?
And to be honest with you, I think if anybody would know if there was another one coming in town, I bet it would be him.
Okay, yeah, so I, that's just what I was told by somebody else in the mall, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's true or not, but I would think he'd know. I mean, I would have probably asked him, hey, have you heard of anybody else coming in?
Because we don't regulate businesses, we don't always get informed when businesses are coming. I mean, it's a great thing if businesses, when they're thinking of coming to the city, they do reach out to staff to find out the ordinances, so they don't start something and then be told, no, you can't. Staff hasn't been informed of anything yet, but not that they're required to tell us.
I don't think this is going to draw 12 months, I don't at all. The state might, but I don't see the city doing it.
I don't think it will either.
No.
I think we're in the same boat as a lot of other cities.
Yeah, I mean, he just said four other cities are talking about it tonight. So, I mean, if, whether we're fourth or the fifth, I mean, we're definitely not the only ones. And we just need a little more education on this, and we're just asking for that, pretty much.
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess the length of time is the only thing that I would kind of be concerned on, but. But I don't, I don't think it will take that long, but I mean, do we want to try to set a goal of sooner than that, or?
Anything by the first of the year?
A lot of it will depend on how soon, like, the League of Minnesota Cities can start working on this with the cities, too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, there's a lot of other entities that are going to be involved in figuring the stuff out.
I've never known the League of Minnesota to stall, I mean.
Mayor and council, the League of Minnesota Cities has shared that they are working on this pretty diligently because they have a lot of cities knocking on their door of what to do. And a lot of the cities aren't big and have attorneys on staff and things like that, so they're looking to do that work for cities. And when I had a fiscal meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, this was still on a hot-button issue that they were working on. So I, not that they gave a deadline or timeline exactly, but that was something that they were taking very seriously right away, because cities need help in maneuvering through it.
I mean, if I had to guess, I'd bet three to six months, they'd, they'd have it out the door.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean, I guess I'd feel a little better about it if we said maybe first of the year or something like that, was that what you said, Dan?
No, I just, I just, it just depends on, like I say, what.
Maybe you guys should visit it during the goal-setting meeting, if nothing's done by then. Put it in the goal-setting meeting.
We could always, we could always pass this tonight and then revisit it in the goal-setting meeting, could we not?
Yes, the maximum of the 12 months is the maximum it can take, but it can be removed, lifted, per se, at any time. If, whether you didn't agree with the provisions that the research showed, or the research showed that no provisions were needed, correct, this is in place temporarily. And decisions made, it doesn't have to be for or against necessarily.
So we could set this tonight and then at goal settings, if we felt like.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley, and a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries 4-0. Move on to K2, the consideration of amendments to City Code Chapter 188 and Chapter 230 for the outdoor archery range. 2A would be an ordinance amending Chapter 188, hunting and firearms. And then 2B would be an ordinance amending Chapter 230, parks and recreation area. Ms. Wood?
Thank you again, Mayor, Mayor and Council. So we, with the soon-to-be-opening new archery range, which if you haven't taken a look at it, it does look pretty spectacular already, it does require to have some amendments to our city code. As you had mentioned, Chapter 188, under hunting and firearms, because this would be considered a weapon. C has been added to Section 188-2. Persons using bow and arrows are permitted as, at the designated outdoor archery range within the designated shooting area. And then Chapter 230, under parks and recreation areas, because we do need regulation of rules set for this area. Those are within the packet, under, and modifications added to 230-7, which are those rules and regulations. If you have any questions on those, let me know. These ordinances were reviewed by the Parks Coordinator, as well as myself and Chief Myers, to make sure that they were consistent with using items that'll be out at the archery range. And it has been posted for the required 10-day notice, and staff is recommending approval. And the regulations, I shall say, will also be posted at the site.
Do we, do we want to say firearms in that, is that, is that something we have to do?
They're grouped together.
I mean, I could see the hunting of archery, but you say firearms, I think I could take my sidearm down there and shoot a few things.
The Chapter 188, under hunting and firearms, doesn't permit for anything within the city limits. This is allowing bows to be shot within city limits.
Okay.
In the permitted regulated, the area.
I just see that word firearms, and that's the.
On D for the rules and regulations, at the, it should be arrows instead of bows at the end. Yeah, right.
I'd like to see that.
Staff will make that change, thank you.
I'll second it then, or did you, did you make a motion, or?
Nobody did.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I was, just started to.
Alright, I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Collison, and a second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries 4-0. K3 is a resolution approving a conditional use permit for installing a paging repeater and antenna on the city water tower.
Thank you, Mayor, this is, was a presentation that was given at the August 16th Planning Commission for a conditional use permit. This is to help the fire district, as well as other emergency response partners from the county sheriff's office, in allowing there to be a VHF, VHF paging repeater antenna placed upon the city's water tower.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley, and a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries 4-0. Resolution approving a special event permit application for Dual Apalooza.
Thank you, Mayor. Pump Republic is a new weightlifting gym that's opened in the Dual Square Mall. They are requesting to hold a grand opening event in the grassy area at the mall. The event is Saturday, October 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They plan to have giveaways, food, drinks, and they will be asking for freewill donations that they will give to the outstanding Cambridge Emergency Response Units. They also may have some vendors out there as well. They do have approval from the Dual Square Mall owner that, that they're renting and leasing that space with them, that they are permitted to have that on his property. And they have submitted all the application and required documentation for this special event.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley, and a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries 4-0. Do we have anything in here for the street dance? I, a lot of people are asking me, are we able to sell liquor in our park? So, and I don't see that, and this is going to be the last city council meeting before that street dance.
They have it for that address, for that specific location.
So we've already got it, okay.
Yes, we're waiting on Thunder Brothers to come back from the state, but the Lions is regulated at the city level, so they are good to go. But the state has let me know that they're working on it. I went to a meeting last week, and they were up to September 11th, so it should be very, very soon that we get it back.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have a?
To add, Mayor, that, I'm not sure exactly what meeting it was at, but I'd have to look up the date. But it was just determined that city events would need to pull a special event permit. That was approved by council, so that's why you haven't seen all the application, the redundancy of those street dances come through.
So is, does it say out there, no alcoholic beverages, is that why we're pulling that special permit?
We didn't pull a special event permit for the street dance, but we did do, file for the application and the process for the Lions to sell alcohol out there and other brewery, the other brewery, if they get permitted by the state to be out there. But yes, they do have to be licensed to be able to have alcohol on that public park grounds.
All I was worried about was making sure we were covered for that. And then L4. Did we say we wanted to do that? L4 in our consent agenda?
First, Mayor, we do have the.
Five, six, and seven yet.
The business items with the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping over Mike Becker's items.
You don't want to hurt Mike's feelings.
I don't want to hurt Mike's feelings, so we better rewind here, sorry, Mike. Let's move on to K5, a resolution setting the 2023 finance budget and levy meeting.
He's been working on this all year.
I know, right? This is where Mike gets to talk.
So.
Alright, so tonight, we've got three resolutions, one for setting the meeting for final levy and budget in December. The next one is to set the preliminary budget, and then the third is to set the preliminary levy. We can do those individually in that order, or at the end, if we want, we can go through and say motion for all three. So, just to clarify that. Tonight, when we set the preliminary budget and levy, really, the only action we are actually taking is that we are committing to a levy that cannot exceed that amount. When we go to December, we can lower it further if we'd like, we can change the budget however we'd like. But we cannot go above the levy that we set tonight, that's the only real action. Before I get started, in the budget that is in the packet, there is a, a small number of revisions from the last work session. Since then, we got, staff got word that T-Mobile, I think is the, they've changed names a few times. T-Mobile's got a lease on the water tower, they are terminating the lease. So we expect that revenue to disappear, so that's about 23.5. Also, I got an updated number on the final certified LGA amount. So that also decreases general fund revenues by a little over 5,000. We've got some money for the liquor store to add an AED, so that'll take them down 1,600 bucks. Based on prior committee discussion, I've added the dynamic sign-in. We talked about a time range. We talked about a time range, right now, I've got it queued up for 2024. Maybe kind of the same deal is that if we need to, we can execute that in 2023, but for now, we leave that in 2024. And currently, I've got it split basically 50/50 between general funds, capital fund of 920, and the liquor store. Premise being is that we could, depending where that's located, we might be able to utilize that for both, and let the liquor store cover half that cost. We've also got in 2024, this doesn't affect this budget, but just so you know, the document is updated. We've got new council chamber speakers in 2024, and so that's not something we technically are approving tonight, but that is on there. And then we've also added for 2020, for 2023, did add two picnic tables. One would be going to the community garden, and one would be going to the new archery range, so. So that, that is in there, and those will be subject to council approval. So, starting with preliminary budget and levy adoption. I go over this a thousand times, I'll keep going over it a thousand times. Everybody should understand the, the components of municipal budget. I break it down in my mind, I break it down into four broad categories. Operating revenues and expenses, intergovernmental revenue and expenses, capital projects, and then capital maintenance and replacement. I think if you understand those four categories, you can, you can understand a municipal budget fairly well. Operating revenues and expenditures, here we're talking about general fund levy, we're talking about rates, when we're talking about revenues. For expenses, you know, these are the standard items, right? Paying staff and city hall, keeping lights on, you know, having, having phone service, internet, you know, the, the basics. For those expenses, I'm gonna look at anything from a five-year average down to prior six months. As far as competency, and we'll get to why we care about competency, or the frame in which we view this, talk about this. Competency is easy on this one, right? You, you just gotta be mildly competent, you can come up with this stuff. Every city should be able to do that well. Intergovernmental revenue, same deal. Revenue, we're talking about LGA, is the primary thing in the state of Minnesota, but we're also grant money, right? Maybe federal grant, state grant, it's possible to even get county grants. Expenses, when you're talking about expenses, in the end, your, your expenses are going to be dictated to you by regulations and legislation. You will not choose your expenses, they will have been identified for you. Competency in this category, again, this is not too difficult to be competent, because you will be legally required to do so, and if you are not, they will set you straight. Capital projects, here we're talking about maybe levies, could be rates, user fees, those types of things. There, I'm presenting a 20-year horizon, and the, the idea here is to think about capital projects as being those items which we require an engineer, right? Street projects, putting up a new building, those types of things. Most cities are gonna be competent on this, simply because you're going to pay an engineer to make sure you are competent. The last one is the one that I think is the most important, I've spoke about this several times, I think this is what sets us apart from every other city. This is capital maintenance and replacement. Again, we're talking about levies and rates for the revenues, we're talking about a 20-year horizon for expenses, but this is something that very few cities do well. Very few cities spend the time and effort to go through, put together 20 years that is presented. Of course, I end up going out 40 years to make sure I'm not going out into left field, but to put together that detail, to plan for every single, every single light fixture in the building, every, you know, tuck-pointing brickwork, roofs, windows, you know, storefront counters, you name it, every little item that we can think of is on that list, and we understand what the useful life is, we agree upon that, and then we queue that up. Most cities do not do that, most cities, their capital maintenance replant consists of, well, what should we do this year? Great, let's do that, and we'll issue bonds. But of course, we've talked about, that's not the goal here. Goal is to not issue bonds, at least not levy bonds. When you issue levy bonds, you pay interest, and that does matter to taxpayers, businesses or residents. So we'll strive to stay away from that, we haven't done that, we don't have plans to do that. So we're gonna manage those components of the municipal budget, we're gonna consider those associated timelines, and in the end, good fiscal management means small and steady increases or decreases in your tax rate over time. There are gonna be times where the tax rate will have to go up, that's fine, but we're gonna do it in a, in a slow and steady manner. Most of the time, we're gonna hopefully have the tax rate going down, when we do that, we wanna be doing that in a controlled way, right? So that when we go down 1%, 2%, 3%, we, we don't have to reverse course. We've done it responsibly, and we know that that, that decrease is gonna stick. All of these things together, this, this is how we compete against other cities, and whether, whether anybody likes it or not, we are competing against other cities. It does matter if we retain our residents, it does matter if we draw new residents, it does matter if we bring in new businesses, and it does matter if we keep the ones we have, and this is, this is a huge part of how you do that. So tonight, we're looking at the proposed levy, we've got 2022 and 2023 by comparison up there. 2023 is a, is a pretty strong increase in the levy. This is reflected mostly in the fact the market value went up, preliminary market value, we won't get final numbers till December, preliminary market value is up 26%. A fair chunk of that is on existing homes, but primarily, we're talking about new homes and new businesses, new stuff that's been built in the city. So this is, this is where we sit for, for that, and like I've always talked about, levies go up over time. Looking at levies isn't particularly helpful, it's a lot more useful to compare over years than against other cities to look at tax rate. So 2023, right now, as things sit, we're, we're looking at, or projecting a 57.6% tax rate. 2022, which is current year we're in right now, is 59%. So we're looking at a 2.37% decrease in the tax rate for 2023. For perspective, if I look back 15 years, including 2022, the average tax rate is 66.7. So that is about 13.5% below the 15-year average. All that tells me we're, we're heading in the correct direction.
Like you said, that that 26%, property value is up 26%, is that just city of Iscany, or is that Iscany County, or what is that?
City of Iscany, although it's not, I think we do a little bit better on building, right? Especially new homes. We are, we have been since 2018, one of the, one of the fastest-growing cities per capita in the state. And you see that reflected here. We are, for, for our population, we are building a lot of homes, even this year has barely slowed down, so. And of course, right now, with inflation, those home prices are, those new homes that got built, and we thought maybe we're gonna come on the tax rolls at 180,000 or 220,000, are 50,000, 75,000, more than that. So that definitely has an impact. Levy history, we should care about that, but I wouldn't spend a lot of time focusing on that. You see the levy over time, no matter how you do it, we've got some years there with the Great Recession, we forced that down. But over time, levy's gonna go up, you're gonna have inflation, you're gonna have population growth. Levy is just gonna have to go up over time. But what we really care about then, and understanding, are we actually getting value for our levy, is what is the tax rate? Are we doing more with less? If we spend, if the tax rate continues to go down, we can understand that we are, we are achieving some measure of efficiency, that we are delivering the services that residents are looking for, and businesses are looking for, and we're doing it better each year. So here, we see a couple of things, one, we see that tax rate going down over the last few years, but I would say, more importantly, we see it very, very consistently going down. Prior years there, we got about a 10-year span there, where it was a little bit all over the map. That's, to my, not to my liking, but I think we've got a, I think we've got a good thing going here, and we can understand that consistently declining tax rate should be a reasonable expectation.
Does that levy hike from last year to 2023, just because of our population?
Yeah, I mean, we bring on additional services, we've gotta pay more for people, right? Inflation doesn't just affect, just, doesn't just affect, you know, goods, it also affects services, right? You've gotta actually pay people more, but I've also seen increases in electric, gas, insurance. You know, it's kind of across the board. And so that, that kind of gets, you know, you kind of get nickled and dimed on inflation. It ends up touching almost every one of your expense accounts, and just kind of keeps, keeps ticking you up on that stuff. But all that detail is, is sure in there, and if anybody does have any questions, this is not the, the final meeting. I'd be happy to go over anything. I would try not to bore you to, to no end. Property tax calculation, we've touched on this a little bit, why tax rate is more important than levy. Levies are gonna go up, population goes up, the services that you have to provide go up. Levy's gonna go up over time, we care more about the tax rate, that's when we understand if we've been more efficient, that's when we understand if we're winning as we compete against other cities. And when we get to that final budget meeting, we will have that, that final grid that I show each year, where we see, how did we do over the last five years against all the cities that we are competing against? Last year, we were doing markedly better than ever, all the, all the cities that we compete against, I expect that's gonna continue.
So that levy's attached to the property value, right?
Yeah, so we set, we set a levy, but then basically, you're dividing that levy out against, against property values, and that's where you're understanding that tax rate, then that tax rate gets applied per parcel, yep. The, I should, I should, we get to the end here, and it's, you know, questions and comments. The only thing that I would say, that the biggest things we got out there, we do have some ongoing labor negotiations. I think I've got a good understanding of where I think we're gonna end up, I don't think that's gonna come out of left field on me. The thing I spend more time thinking about at night, as we approve the preliminary budget, and I consider the final budget, is actually where health insurance might come in. I've got it in at 15%. What we've been hearing from Peep is that school districts have already renewed, and a lot of times, you get a, kind of a glimpse into the future, based on what school districts do, you can kind of understand where cities might end up, it's never a guarantee. But right now, the renewal's been anywhere from negative 5 up to 50%, with most entities ending up in that 11% range. Odds are 15%.
Increase, or?
Yeah, odds are, 15% is gonna be fine for us. If it ends up being 50, well, yeah, we'll, we'll deal with that, but we'll, we'll come back and, and make council aware of the options that are out there, so.
Any questions for Mr. Becker?
Been a pleasure working with you, Mike, you've done a great job since I've been here, so.
Appreciate it.
Since you've been here, I was here before you.
I appreciate that.
Can we put all these in one?
Yes, Mayor, you, you can, as long as they're done in that order.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a motion from Councilman Burgley to set the 2023 final budget and levy meeting, approving the 2023 preliminary budget for the city of Iscany, and adopting the proposed 2022 tax levy collectible in 2023 for the city of Iscany. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Thank you for the job, always well done, Mr. Becker. Now moving to the consent agenda, now I can ask that, L four, did, did we, wanna move forward with that?
So Mayor, if I may clarify on that, within our city code, Chapter 8-6 for Planning Commission, it does state that absence from any three meetings in a 12-month period unless excused in advance by the chair constitutes a vacancy. In the event any vacancy, the city council shall appoint a person to complete the unexpired term. Therefore, we would post and go through that process of council appointing after interviewing whoever does apply, and filling it whoever they think is in the best interest of the city. Mr. Collins has had more than three unexcused, as well as quite a handful of excused absences as well. So staff did feel that it was time that we do present it to council to term out his seat and open it up as a vacancy.
Has anyone, and I certainly haven't, but has anyone asked him why he's absent so much, or do we know why? I mean, sometimes out of the country, I get that.
The last one, he said that he had, plain and simple, told me he fell asleep.
Okay, that's one, what about the rest of them, I mean, there are quite a few that he's gone.
I can't recall how many there were. I know Councilman Collison's wanted, he's been after this for a few months.
I don't need a, I don't need any reasons from him why I miss, it's just we need to move forward with someone that'll be here more, so we can be more productive. Nothing against him, I liked it when he was here, 'cause it's, you know, his input was appreciated, but if he's not gonna be here, we need to fill that spot with someone else.
Does he know that, I mean, has anybody told him that he can't miss more than three, and, I mean, have we made him aware of that?
Yes, Councilman Gordon, he was, delivered an email, maybe even a letter as well, from Stephanie, informing him.
Has he missed three since, since we gave him that letter?
No, not since he's received the letter, but just letting him know it's been more than three unexcused absences. But I believe he was notified via email from her in advance of this, that it, that there were multiple, letting him know of the requirement.
He had a chance to show up, and, tonight?
I would say he would, he knew.
I guess I, I have no problem with it, we've, we've been talking about it for a while, you know, I, I'm on board with Councilman Collison.
The whole point of that is to give the residents a chance to be a part of a board. And there might be residents that would gladly wanna be a part of it, given the chance, you know, and put their, put their time in and do a good job, and.
Absolutely.
And Mayor and council, I do believe that he was informed that he could reapply for that vacancy, and then it would be up to council if they wanted to choose him as that person to fill that seat, he was informed.
Well, the nice thing about that is we, he could be asked, you know, are you gonna be more committed, you know, if, if we, if we did reapply, you know? I mean, you certainly wouldn't wanna bring him in here and not ask him that question, right?
Motion to approve, consent to Jenna.
Motion to approve consent agenda by Councilman Collison, and a second by Councilman Burgley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Any other, any other thing we have, is what? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Burgley, and a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero, therefore, we stand adjourned.